On our district social media accounts, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. So please share our spotlight story and post with your family and friends so that they can join us in applauding our high-performance students and also our, our high-performance staff. In addition, our school district has, has also taken the opportunity at, at our board meetings to highlight heroes in our community. We've done that for many, many years, which have included children as well as, as adults. And, and heroes, they come in and all, in all shapes and sizes, you know, as you know. And I'm very proud to shine the spotlight this evening on one of our very own Pebble Hills High School students for his true act of heroism that saved the little girl's life. But I don't want to spoil the very special presentation that our chief communications officer, Daniel Escobar will be presenting on one of our own Pebble Hills High School students. So his presentation will follow here, will follow shortly. And lastly, I'm also very proud to share today that, that, that our board president, Ms. Cynthia Nahara, says she requested that a resolution be drafted by administration that asked the Texas Education Agency to suspend the STAR test as well as the A through F state accountability ratings for this current school year. And I fully support President Nahara's position. Uh, I'm sure all board members would agree as well and, 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 uh, uh, because we need to focus on the, the, the physical and the emotional wellbeing of our students, our teachers, our staff and, and community when we reopen our schools in the fall without the unnecessary stress of a state exam. So administration will work on drafting the resolution and, and we'll have it ready for our border trustees to adopt at a August board meeting. That concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. And to add to the resolution, at this time, I am working on drafting a letter to the T E A that I will be sharing with our trustees and sending to Commissioner Morat. This letter specifically requests the suspension of the STAR testing and the A through F state accountability ratings for the 2020, 2021 school year. And we certainly look forward to the commissioner taking the appropriate action, which is will be in the best interest of our students and our staff. And so, uh, we will be getting that to the trustees, uh, for everyone's signature.
Good job, Cindy.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And we're gonna, uh, move on now to item number four, the special presentation by Mr. Escobar.
Thank you, President Nahara, members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to share this special presentation. As Dr. Espinoza mentioned, this evening, we honor an extraordinary student from Pebble Hills High School who risked his own safety to save a six-year-old girl while he was vacationing with his family earlier this, this summer. He was at Galveston Beach passing a football round when he noticed a girl floating off in the ocean on her own. While others were frozen in disbelief, he did not hesitate to swim to her and caught her just as she was slipping off of her boogie board, which at the time was the only thing keeping her afloat. After pulling her to safety, he got, got her back to her grandmother, who was extremely grateful for his courageous actions. This brave young man said he was always taught to help others, and at the moment, he just did what was right. He will be a junior at Pebble Hills High School this coming school year and is a key member of the school's football team. He is certainly a hero in Team S I S D, and we applaud his selfless actions to save someone in need. He all, we also want to take this moment to thank his parents for raising an outstanding, dedicated and caring young man. Now you can read more of his story on our website, sisd.net. And at this time, we'd like to congratulate Kenneth Cooper, Jr.
President Nahara.
Yes, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, um, you know, way to go, Kenneth. Very, very proud of you, sir. And I'm sure Mr. and Mrs. Cooper are, are listening in. So I want to send a quick shout out to them. Uh, this is an inspiring story that really hits home with me as a parent. So I'm, I'm hoping that my wife and I are, are, are able to instill those same values with our little boys that Mr. and Mrs. Cooper did so well with Kenneth. So congratulations with, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Cooper for raising a top-notch young man who, who does a great job on and off the field. So Kenneth, way to be a hero. Can't wait to see you play on the football field. Let's just hope that it's sooner than later, Kenneth. So again, thank you so much to the parents, uh, and, and Kenneth, congratulations again. Thank you for, for doing that.
And ma'am, that concludes our special presentations for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Escobar. Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. And on behalf of the board, we are extremely grateful to have such an amazing young man as part of Team S I S D. Thank you. Before we move on to item number five, uh, we have several public letters, uh, that have been sent into the board. Uh, Ms. Mercedes, will you be reading those tonight?
Yes, ma'am. President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Letter number one, Buenas tardes, soy Blanca Ávila. Tengo trabajando con transportación desde el año 2000. Muy contentan con mi maravilloso trabajo, pero ahora me gustaría preguntar, ¿cuándo vamos a empezar a trabajar? Y si nos van a seguir afectando la pandemia como hasta hoy que están ustedes preparando para los trabajadores de transportación. Porque necesitamos un salario para poder sobrevivir o sobrellevar la crisis. Ya que no podrán los co- I'm sorry, ya que no paran los cobros de llegar. Y queremos saber, ya que así podríamos pedir desempleo, una solución sería que si nos siguieran pagando como en los meses anteriores o que nos autoricen pedir desempleo. Otros distritos están pagando el 20% y autorizan pedir desempleo. Es en verdad algo estresante estar sin trabajo. Yo soy viuda y no tengo ninguna entrada de dinero. Me gustaría una respuesta a nuestro favor. Muchas gracias. Atentamente, Blanca Ávila. Letter number two, this letter is for our board members. I am making this call to you, the board members, to hear us out. I am a father of three children. Right now with this situation, my family is struggling to pay our bills and equity. Right now, it is time for you guys to help us out in this struggling times. I really love my job. I am always put 100% of what I do. As a bus driver, it is my pleasure to put a smile on every single student every time I pick them up in the morning and after, from their homes to and from school and vice versa. I understand the situation with this pandemic, and I would like for you all to keep us safe as is happening with the students, to keep them safe in their homes. I hope that you can continue paying us like last school year and for us to be safe in our homes, taking care of our young ones. As a 17-year district employee, I would like to stay and make this district stay what it is, the best district in Texas. It's a great A district because of us, you, the board members, and I. We made this happen, but if you don't help me out, I might have the need to look for another job somewhere else. I hope you all can read this and have it in your heart to help us out. I believe you can make it happen for all of us. Thank you sincerely, Enrique Bernal, bus driver. Letter number three, to all of our S I S D board members. I am a 15-year, 15-year district employee, bus driver, and mother of four S I S D students. At this time of COVID-19 pandemic, I'm so happy to be at home with my children, enjoying family time, but really struggling to pay my equity bills, loans, food, et cetera. I love my job and I would be sad if I have to look for another job. My children have the right to a decent life. I'm a working mom and I want them to be very, or, or worry-free. If you all can, help me monetarily by paying me at last, just like last school year, to provide for my family so I can continue to keep them all safe and be ready to go to work when the district opens again. Thank you, Elizabeth Bernal. Letter number four, good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Luis Sines. I worked 19 years as a bus driver for S I S D. The situation of COVID-19 and the closing of schools have left us, left us, the transportation department with no job. I am going through a terrible situation with no income for the months of June and July. I am worried and afraid that I may lose my house, cars, and medical insurance. I want to know what plan you have for bus drivers and monitors since we have no receive a district or unemployment check for two months. We do not know how much longer the students will be receiving classes online, and I do not want to look for another job, especially since I've been a bus driver for S I S D for 19 years. Thank you for your help and support, Luis Sines. Letter number five, good evening, Board President Nahara, board members, and Dr. Espinoza. My name is Sylvia Duarte, a part-time bus driver for 25 years, in which seven of these here at S I S D. I come to you with dire need of questioned answers, such as, will we be getting paid until physically returning back? This situation has impacted me to the extreme of soon-to-be homelessness by September 1st. Anxiety and depression, sleepless nights, in the uncertainty of when to return to work has continuously been delayed. In fear of benefits being dropped due to no payment with no income coming into my household, please take into consideration, we love our job. We want to stay, and having a medical condition makes a hard decision to move on. Thank you for the opportunity in letting me speak my personal situation, Sylvia Duarte, bus driver. Letter number six, to the Honorable President of the Board, Ms. Cynthia Nahara, Vice President David Morales, and Dr. Espinoza, Superintendent of Schools. I wish you greetings during this time of national hardship and uncertain times we are living throughout in our communities and schools around El Paso area and the world. I wanted to introduce myself, Patricia Wilson, a valued and dedicated employee of Socorro School District for the past 18 years. It has been a privilege and honor to support the dedicated teachers, students, parents, and workers of our district as to be a valued employee of the S I S D Transportation Department. During my 18 years of selfless service and dedication to many special needs students, I have never had to write to your honored board in the past. But as we all know, this desperate times call for action from all to introduce the problems of the employees to the board to help understand the feelings and economic hardship that may have been enduring these current months. As you know, or may not know, many of us, employees have applied to the Texas Workforce Department for unemployment benefits that are a benefit in times of distress, unemployment, and hardship. It is at this time, I formally request that my benefits be permitted to proceed to be processed for economic hardship during these difficult times. Having no employment or little employment is exceptionally hard for me at this time. I have two adult children that depend completely on my financial support at all times. My oldest son has been paralyzed for the last year and a half from a motorcycle accident and is not able to work. We all have bills, and I take my bills very serious and implore to be processed for an, an unemployment as requested through the Texas Workforce Division. My union requested that I write to you personally so to have firsthand words from your employee of 18 years. I have never requested unemployment benefits before this time. If possible, I hope that no additional benefits are lost during this difficult time as we, i.e. life insurance, disability, et cetera. I truly appreciate the time you have given me to express my concern during this very difficult time and hardship. Your valued employee with solidarity and commitment to the children of Socorro ISD and my family. Sincerely, Ms. Patricia Wilson, Transportation, S I S D. Thank you, Ms. Nahara. Those are, are the six letters that we have received.
Thank you, Ms. Mercedes.
Is there a knock it out?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mena.
Is there, can we look into them? Maybe we're giving some sort of benefit? What can we do? This is really heartbreaking, really, really heartbreaking. Can we look into this, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mena, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, ma'am, we, we will. We will look into this. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on now with item number five, district reports, A, facilities report, Mr. Eington.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My report begins on page 10 with Socorro High School. Our high school is moving along real well. The demolition and installation of the lights on the football field and the old baseball field are, are going up. And we've got rough in preparations for new lights at the base, pole bases on the tennis courts and at the softball field. Installation, the outfield fencing and softball fence, uh, fencing is ongoing. Drainage system, uh, and infield is going. We've got structural still going up. C M U walls for the classroom wings are ongoing. And then we've got, uh, a lot of sidewalk asphalt parking and drives ongoing. If you turn to page 11, you'll see in a, uh, aerial of the site. Uh, if you can look kinda in the middle of the site, uh, you can see some dark area. That is actually where the academic tower is going up and the structural still. As, as you can see, we've got, uh, and, uh, and practice area, the baseball, I mean, the student parking. And then on the right-hand side of the pitcher, along the edge of the boundary, you see the tennis courts and the baseball field. If you turn to slide number 12, it shows a little bit closer view of that. And then you can see the structural still going up and on the lower, uh, left-hand corner. And you can also see, uh, on the right-hand side, uh, above the tennis courts, you can see the infield going in for the softball field for the new artificial turf. And then you can see the, the kind of the tannish area. And we are preparing for the, uh, infield, uh, for the new artificial turf of the baseball field. Montwood High School, that project is moving relatively fast. A lot of work is going on, metal studs, structural steel, uh, M E P roughens are ongoing. We got, uh, C M U blocks, roughing going up, uh, the black box. We're actually putting in the catwalk. And the new cafeteria and area and the serving lines finishes are starting in that area. The existence, uh, serving area, we're going mechanical plumbing, rough ends. And then we've got special education rooms being finished in, in the interior of the building along with the, um, register's office. Turn to the page 14, you can see from the road, you can see the, the trains and the structural steel all going up and in front of the building. And you see that the, uh, character of Montwood High School exterior, new exterior is coming along. Americas High School, we are just now, um, really getting into that project. We've got it all bid out. As I reported the last month, bids came in real good. We approved some alternates, and we are doing underground, a lot of underground work and footings ongoing just to start this, uh, project. If you turn to page, uh, 16, you can see that we've got along the exterior of the building where the a lot of dirt work, excavation, and footings are going up for Americas High School. Eldorado High School, we've got slab on grade. Uh, we've got a lot of tilt-up going on. Uh, we're working a lot of slabs, torn drainage. There's roofing and some of the existing area, no pitcher, Mr. Gondal. Uh, we've got architectural room, uh, the architectural program. We've got the rooms going up on that. We've got the concession and the restaurant building. Slab board, C M, C M U walls are going up, black box. Uh, slab is 100%, and we've got metal studs, structural still ongoing. On the pond and area, we've got the iron fence insulation irrigation is ongoing. The band room, we're working on the band room orchestra and the nurses suite. Turning to page 18, you can see some of the new construction going up, and you can see the slabs. The, uh, the tilt wall board in those locations will be tilted up. The next project is on page 19 is the new student activity complex. We have been working, uh, with the architects and the design team to, uh, do the annexation and do all the paperwork for the annexation of the new 60 acres into the city of El Paso. So we've been working along that. The designs team is also working on the, uh, the drawings, and, and those are coming along, uh, well. And we should have some, uh, new pictures and new drawings to review here in the next couple of months. Uh, turning to page 20, we get into our auxiliary gym. The package number one, uh, the six facilities, Benito Martinez, Fita Chavez, Helen Ball, Luan Chavez, O'Shea, Kellaher, and Etwarte are really coming along. And you'll see those in, in the, the following pictures. A lot of walls are going up. We've got a lot of structural steel going up. We've got roofing going up. And, um, in the first bid package is moving. If you look at page 21, you can see Fita Chavez. See that the exterior of the building has come along, and we're doing, um, some exterior finish work. See Sergeant Etwarte's exterior walls are up. Turning to the next page, page 22, Helen Ball and O'Shea Kellaher are up and, and they're taking shape along with page 23, Benito Martinez and Luan Chavez. Uh, auxiliary gym number two, or package number two, B D S, Horizon Heights, Loma Verde, Cooper, and Sarah Vista are moving. Uh, a lot of work is being done on the building pads. We've had to move some utilities that were underneath the buildings. Uh, we're doing some stem walls and C M U walls, excavating for footings, doing interior plumbing on some of the schools that have old restrooms that have not been your burden to be utilized and, uh, and retaining walls. If you look at page 25, Vista Dos Sol, you'll see that we are doing some retaining wall there in order to place our new, uh, gym in that location. Loma Verde, we are starting a lot of dirt work and groundwork on that package. And if you turn to page 26 or slide 26, Cooper is, is starting some installation and some, uh, foundation footings for that gym package. The auxiliary gym package number three, which is the right remaining, uh, five schools. Escondrias, Italy, Laco, and Rojas. We are reviewing those documents. They're 100%. We are getting with, uh, purchasing in order to schedule a bid date. We can advertise and put those out for proposals. And hopefully, we will bringing, be bringing a, uh, recommendation to the board in, uh, probably four to six weeks on that project once we put it out for proposal. The next project on page 28 is our services technology facility. If you've driven by the D S C, you can see a lot of structural steel is up. A lot of the C M U wall is up. They're putting on bar joists or roofing joists is rough. And then a lot of the exterior wall, metal studs are going up for the exterior, uh, of the building. So that project is, is moving. The new combo school, page 30, we are, uh, working with, uh, roughly, we're about 75% with the construction documents and speaking with the, uh, construction manager. Past week, we are, uh, looking at possibly putting out an early package dirt work foundation, so we can get that project started here in the next month or so. And our last project is the Eastlake High School and Pebble Hills High School Sports Lot and Build Maintenance. Working with the design team, uh, to finalize, uh, doing existing surveys and to develop, uh, the construction documents for that project. That completes my report. I'll answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Eington?
Is Nahara?
Yes, Mr. Gondala.
Mr. Eington, um, am I, are we, when is, when should my would be complete?
Complete in, I think it's third month, uh, let's see. It should be complete. Well, I don't have, that's not, excuse me. It should be completed in September 21.
Twenty-one, and are we looking at any savings?
Uh, we've got some savings at Montwood, yes.
Okay, because Mr. Mena said we could have it for Socoros. Just wanted to make sure.
Negative. I need a new parking lot.
Ms. Nahara?
Yes, sir, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, I just want to say that I want to thank Mr. Eington, obviously, all the, the, the projects that are currently taking place at our different schools like Mountwood, Socorro. I was at Socorro High School on Saturday, uh, drove by it and drove into the, the field, not on the field, but there in the area, in the construction area. Got off, I saw the softball field, and you saw the pitchers, uh, the baseball field, they're coming along. It's, it's looking beautiful. Uh, also went by, uh, Luan Chavez and saw that the, the multipurpose, I'm sorry, the auxiliary gym, it's coming along. So, uh, so that's a great job to you and your, your entire team. The, the projects are, are moving forward. Thank you, Ms. Nahara.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eington.
Thank you.
And we will move on to 5B, the Safety and Security Committee update.
Thank you, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the boy, board. Twice a year, the Socorro ISD, um, school board receives a safety update. Today, our Safety and Security Committee will outline our 2020-21 new normals that describe our safety, safe reopening plan for schools. Uh, Dr. Castro.
Good evening, school, uh, uh, school board president, Dr. Espinoza, and school board members. This is the expired customer, the emergency manager, uh, with the school district. Um, as you go through your board book, you'll notice that on pages 45 to 59, you'll see the layout of the campus. You'll see, uh, structured arrival and dismissal areas for social distancing, uh, implementation of campus COVID-19 signage that included the front entrance, reception areas, hallways marked for social distancing, bathrooms, uh, for hand washing, classroom setup with social distancing, and also our non-instructional facilities with COVID-19 signage. I would like to thank the following, uh, departments for their hard work of implementing all the COVID-19 signs at the campuses, our security department that included Gabriel Castañeda, John Murphy, Norma Lujan, Sean McCullough, Martin Corral, Carlos Moreno, Olga Hernandez, and from the print shop, Jose Chacon and Armando Lopez, uh, where their work and collaboration were able to implement all the COVID-19 signs throughout our campus. At this time, I will like to pass it over to Ms. Becky Madrid from Health Services as she continues the presentation.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board and Dr. Espinoza. Uh, you'll find the slides for Health Services in your board book, uh, slides 60 to 64. Okay, and, um, our new protocol, we'll be looking for signs and symptoms. Our nurses will be in the frontline looking for those, uh, with our staff and of course with our students. Our nurses will also be working with their administration there on the campus and designating an isolation room in the event that we have to isolate, uh, uh, one of our little ones or one of the staff members. If we do have to isolate one of our little ones, of course, well, we immediately contact the parents. Nurses will also be working with your administrator because this year, we, we're not going to be able to have those offices filled with, uh, children as we usually do. So we'll be teaching, uh, our teachers, uh, on, uh, to, to call before sending their, their children. Well, we'll also, uh, provide them with, uh, little, uh, first aid kits like Band-Aid, some cotton four-by-four. Well, we'll also provide them with little first aid kits like Band-Aids, some cotton four-by-fours, just to be able to take care of the superficial like scrapes and small cuts. So it's going to be different. Our nurses are working with PR and developing educational videos for both our students and staff on how to prevent transmission of COVID-19. And we'll continue to work, of course, as we always do with our special ed, our counseling and our local medical doctors in the coordination of care with our special healthcare needs and of course those who may develop COVID-19. And our nurses will be working collaboratively with our local health department to assist with the contact tracing in the event of any of our students or staff members happen to be exposed in our, in our campuses to COVID-19. Thank you. And with that, I'll pass to Chief Castarena.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Espinoza, this is Chief Castarena. I'll be going over pages sixty-five and sixty-six of the workbook. Now, we will continue to provide services to the campuses in traditional form. The modifications that the department will implement are officers will be utilizing the link provided by human resources to clock in and out for service. And they'll spend more time covering campuses externally. Calls for service will require additional information prior to deploying personnel. But emergency situation arises that requires immediate police response. It will be handled with safety protocols in place as outlined by CDC, state and local governance. The purpose for the modifications is for reducing the possibility of exposure and infection. And that's it in a nutshell. Thank you. And next, I believe, is Director for Athletics, Jimmy Calderon.
Good evening, President Nahera, Dr. Espinoza and members of the board. This is JJ Calderon, Director of Athletics. I'll be covering safety guidelines for athletics and PE slides sixty-seven through seventy-six. Safety guidelines for athletics include daily screenings will be required and all practices and workouts will follow UIL, CDC and Health Department guidelines. Indoor practices should be held at a minimum, or excuse me, a maximum of fifty percent of the facility. Groupings for athletes should stay consistent as possible. Transportation to athletic events should follow all Socorro ISD and TEA transportation guidelines. Locker rooms will remain closed until further notice and no clothing or towels should be laundered on site. No sharing of water bottles or drinks will be allowed and face covering should be worn when not actively participating. All equipment and surfaces must be disinfected regularly and hand sanitizers and washing stations should be available prior, prior to and after workouts or practices. Attendance for games and competitions will be announced as more information becomes available. The athletic department will advise all campuses on any changes to safety protocols. Physical education, PE instruction will include onsite, virtual and remote learning lessons without sharing of equipment. Masks should be worn when students are not actively participating. Teachers at the elementary level will develop a routine and walk through multiple times so that students are comfortable with transitions. And trainings with PE coaches and classroom teachers at the elementary level should be scheduled for organizational purposes. Floor markings and spacing guides will help with social distancing. And protocols that need to be set up per campus include pickup and drop-off locations, water bottle distribution and hydration protocols, hand sanitizing schedules, restroom and hall pass protocols, and emergency response plans. With that, I'd like to pass this on to Mr. Ortega and Special Education.
President Nahera, Paul Garcia, I got some questions for JJ.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
JJ, I know that UIL, I don't know if it was yesterday or today, discussed the future of, I guess, high school sports. Do you have any update for the board on that?
Oh, yes, sir. We actually got information this morning. T, UIL released the guidelines for following, or excuse me, for starting fall sports. And we're currently targeting September eighth as a return. But right now, we're working with our leadership team to develop a return and a start plan for this fall. We did get some dates. Football, volleyball, cross-country and tennis are the sports that are affected the most. But we're looking at the target dates that UIL set and how that affects each sport and each campus.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
President Nahera?
Mr. Gander.
Mr. Guerrero?
Real quick, and I apologize, I just want to ask Mr. Athletic Director, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Just a real quick question. You know, I don't know, you know, it is around, you know, you start hearing rumors left and right. One of the rumors that I've been hearing is that most likely that all sports might be just moved till spring. Is there any truth to that?
At this time, sir, UIL did, did release some information this morning that football, volleyball, cross-country and tennis would start, would have a target start date of September the seventh. That does conflict a little bit with our school calendar and our city guidelines. So we're looking probably to modify that just a little bit, working with area athletic directors on schedules. But as of right now, fall sports do have a starting date of September seventh per UIL. As far as moving to the spring, I know there was some discussion, but nothing, nothing was decided on that at this time, sir.
And Mr. Guerra, I believe you had a question as well?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Calderon says one of the subject. I know you and I have been going back and forth and so as far as the remote, the kids that are in remote learning, they will be able to participate also in sports. That is correct, correct?
I, yes, sir. As long as it's after the city guidelines, I believe we were, we are allowing students that are choosing remote learning, allow them to participate in practices and competitions. Yes, sir.
So if, if, if UIL is allowing football to have practice in the morning or volleyball practice in the morning and the kids are choosing remote learning, they could show up to practice in the morning before school starts, show up to practice like at six-thirty and then go home for remote learning. That is correct?
Yes, sir, you are correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
JJ, Paul Garcia, I have another question for you regarding the remote physical education. And I'm reviewing your slide here. And it says students must submit work for attendance and, and grades. How are we going to meet those TEA guidelines? What is being expected of our students that are doing remote physical education?
Our PE teachers have been working on, on lessons to provide, to provide our students that choose remote learning. We'll be working with each campus and, and the district guidelines for grading purposes. Right now, I could tell you in the spring, we did have a little bit of PE lessons. We had quite a few PE lessons, excuse me, and it worked well. We're building off of that and trying to, to improve those, those lessons for our PE students that choose remote learning. As far as developing the guidelines for grading, we're going to use the first two weeks of professional development to map out our plan for grading for those type of situations.
Okay, thank you, because I'm just kind of worried. I'm not worried, but I'm just kind of curious. I mean, what is, I mean, is a student going to record himself pumping out like twenty push-ups and then submit it or, you know, I mean, just, you know, practical scenario, I guess, kind of question.
Ah, yes, sir. And they, our PE teachers are developing some, some lessons for our students for that along with, with the other lessons that go along with, from the classroom teacher. So we're working with those classroom teachers and the campuses. So like I said, we're, we're counting on the first two weeks of staff development to get a little bit more details on that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Men, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Men.
JJ, one question. What about the booster organizations? Has UIL put out any information on that?
As far as I know, sir, everything is still the same. There hasn't been any modifications to booster clubs yet. Not a hundred percent sure. It was a pretty busy day with all the information we got today. So I can double check on that for you.
Can you find out for me, please? Because I've had some question, some people reached out to me as far as boosters goes. Maybe we can put something out on that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
JJ, Paul Garcia, I'm sorry, one more question regarding, are we allowing city leagues to utilize our fields or, you know, baseball fields or basketball courts?
In, in working with Mr. Ayton's team, I believe we are not using, allowing facility use for the month of July by outside organizations.
Thank you.
Mr. Calderon, this is Mr. Morales. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Super. Another question, as far as intermurals possibly for those students that are not involved in athletics? Is that, is there any, has there any been, has there been any talks on that? Having activities for students after hours?
Are you talking about incorporating those, continuing? What type of intermurals are you, are you?
I know that they, we had in the past, we had the soccer leagues in the fall. We had some basketball leagues for the, for the students that weren't involved in UIL activities.
At, at what level, sir? I know we have our VAS program.
Yeah, yes, that, that program is one, but anything, anything other than that?
At this time, we, we haven't looked into any, any intermurals. I know per campus, some campuses do offer intermurals based on flexibility of schedule and staffing. But we have not made any plans as far as intermurals go for next year yet.
Once again, the question is, do you think that's going to be permissible? Or do you think that's a possibility? I don't know, I'm asking.
I mean, we can mirror the guidelines from athletics and kind of see how they apply to, to those type of situations. And if the opportunity, you know, lends itself, you know, that would be something good for our students to take part in. But, but at this time, that's something we would have to, to look into a little bit further.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
President Nahera, this is Paul Garcia, I have a question for Mr. Blanco, kind of the same topic that we're on now. I'm kind of curious, I've been, some folks have reached out to me regarding, you know, what if the city there's no sports, but the governor says gives an okay. I'm going to assume, I'm assuming that the state overrules the city, but yeah, I'm not an attorney, so. Any opinion, Mr. Blanco?
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, right now, excuse me, TA and the new guidance they've issued has allowed the school districts to follow local orders and rules from local health authorities regarding participation at school. They haven't specifically said that that relates to sports, but I don't and I've not heard and I don't believe that you would have a local health order that would only restrict sports. It's a possibility and TA has not taken a position regarding that. But they have said that local districts will be allowed to comply with local health orders. So for now, I would say that it would fall under that. If they were to issue a local order that was very narrow and focused and tailored and said, for example, you can't play football, you can't play basketball, you can't play baseball, then TA would have to weigh in on that. But so far, that's not been proposed in any of the calls that I've sat in on.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Calderon? Okay, then we can go ahead and resume with Dr. Ortega for the special education.
Good evening, Board President Nahera, Dr. Espinoza and Board members. I am Richard Ortega, Director of Special Education. And tonight I'll be presenting on special education, five oh four and dyslexia on pages seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine and eighty. Seventy-seven is your cover sheet. And on seventy-eight, ARDs and five oh four meetings will be held at campuses if rooms allow for social distancing. If not, then we will continue to conduct both meetings or one of the two meetings remotely. Also, all of our sped students and our students who have been identified with dyslexia will be allowed to be pulled out in order to receive their instructional services and the related services such as dyslexia. Any student who has been referred for special education evaluation will be allowed to be pulled out in order to be evaluated until further notice. There will be no community-based instruction and/or community-based vocational training trips allowed into the community. On page seventy-nine, students who have been referred for dyslexia evaluations will be allowed to be pulled out in order to be evaluated by dyslexic personnel. Currently, private duty nurses who have been allowed to attend with their students on SIC property will be allowed as long as they adhere to SIC wellness and city protocols. Any new private duty nurse request will go through the art process. Homebound services will be provided either in person or remotely based on any underlying medical conditions for both the student and or staff. Amendments and or ARDs will need to be held in order to document the new instructional model for the 2020-21 school year. After six weeks of direct instruction, ARDs will be, will be needed to be held in order to determine compulsory services. Also, our staff will continue to receive CPI instruction and that will be done remotely. On page eighty, in order to accomplish all of these tasks, all of the sped departments will of course receive their face masks, gloves and hand sanitizer. In addition, our related service staffs such as diagnosticians, speech therapists and so on will receive facials and gowns. In addition, diagnosticians and speech therapists, since they do do evaluations face-to-face with students, will receive table shields. I've also taken the liberty of ordering for our unit teachers and all of our unit aides, since they work with our more involved students and order, along with their face masks, gloves and hand sanitizers, they too will receive facials and gowns. Along with that, they too will receive a table shield. Last but not least, all sped department locations, DSC, Ed Center, Ad Next and the campuses as well as the cottages will follow all CDC and SIC wellness protocols. Thank you. And now it is fine arts, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, President Nahera, Dr. Espinoza and members of the board. My name is Armando Martinez, Director of Fine Arts for the District. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you. Tonight I'll be covering slides eighty-one through ninety-three. Eighty-one is your cover sheet, so we'll go ahead and start with slide number eighty-two, covering space and physical environment. Many of our protocols do mirror athletics. We've been working in tandem to develop the safety protocols of our programs. Just some of our overviews is all our programs will continue to follow all CDC, UIL and local health authority guidelines. For our performing arts, the use of outdoor spaces is highly recommended when feasible during the school day. And all of our students shall use their own equipment to the extent possible. There will be no sharing of equipment. On your next slide, going into the daily classroom procedures, in addition to all daily self-help, oh, excuse me, all daily health screening procedures, all instrument and equipment distribution will be facilitated by the teacher to avoid congregation. Students will not share equipment as much as possible. Equipment and music stands shall be used on a one-to-one ratio and wiped down after each individual use. All students are required to wear a mask at all times except when actively performing their instrument or performing their craft. On the next slide, you'll go over the locker protocol. At this time, we are not allowing any locker usage by any of our programs. When we do use lockers further down the road, we are encouraging our programs to, lockers to be monitored and facilitated in small groups by our teachers. Small instruments will be taken with the student from class to class to avoid the locker usage, the use of lockers as much as possible. Lockers will be disinfected and wiped down after each use. And again, before and after school use of lockers shall be controlled and monitored by the directors to avoid hanging out before and after school. On the next slide, recording performances, we are encouraging for the fall semester the use of virtual performances and we're going to try to provide as much training as possible to allow our teachers to put on virtual performances. All performances must continue to follow all copyright and synchronization laws. And we're exploring the capability to live stream events to also follow copyright laws. That's, that's a quick overview in the nutshell. The remaining slides eighty-six to ninety-three are discipline-specific recommendations for your perusal, perusal. Instrumental music, choir, dance, theater, art and elementary fine arts all have their own unique protocols for their individual disciplines. At the time, at this time, updates and protocols regarding fine arts are being updated weekly by national and professional associations. We are meeting weekly with different groups of teachers to review the latest protocols and update our processes as they change. Our goal is to continue meeting with our teachers to make sure that they are prepared to return to campus with the most up-to-date information. And just to give you an overview is our fine arts manual is currently up to seventy pages with additional detailed protocols for each discipline. But we just wanted to give you an overview today about the latest updates. But we just wanted to give you an overview today about the latest updates, and we'll continue to provide updates to you and our teachers as more information becomes available. At this time, we'll now turn it over to Mr. George Thomas and C T E.
Good evening, Ms. Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. My name is George Thomas, the Director for Current Technical Education Programs. I will be covering pages ninety four through ninety seven. Page ninety four, S I S D C T Department has been working with local and state agencies to develop solutions to address C T programming needs. C T is working with campus administration and teachers to ensure safe working environments for both students and teachers while providing the best instruction possible. C T programs will follow district and campus-developed safety protocols and guidelines. Each teacher will develop their own safety protocols specific to their own classrooms and labs. C T facilitators continue to work with their teachers to develop online curricular and instructional components. C T E teachers will continue to work with online curriculum tools to support online learning. Page ninety five, teachers will receive training to support the use of material safety data sheets. Ultraviolet sterilization, sterilization cabinets are available for all labs for safety classes, and safety classes will be available for each student enrolled in lab classes. Supplies will be ordered to ensure students do not have to share. Face shields and aprons will be provided for two students in classes where needed. Page ninety six, C T E is in the process of ordering classroom devices to support dual-platform learning such as web cameras, headsets, microphones, speakers, mobile carts, wireless keyboards, and mice. Keyboards and mice covers have been ordered and received that will allow for the detailed cleaning after each use. Page ninety seven, cleaning protocols will be developed to ensure that shared tools are cleaned after each use. Protocols are being developed to support students who are working out in business and industry through the duration of this pandemic. At this time, I will turn it, turn it over to our Director for Maintenance Operations, Mr. Carrasco.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. I'll be covering slides ninety eight to one hundred. This focus will be on our custodial staff as they support not only our campuses, but also all of our district facilities. I would like to say that our custodial staff have been working continuously to provide a clean, highly sanitized, and safe learning and working environment for all of our district stakeholders of Team S I S D. Our staff is following C D C guidelines as well as the developed district protocols to maintain all of our facilities. They will be focusing on using all P P E, personal protective equipment, during their work shifts with the emphasis, we're emphasizing since we've been on the, the lines continually, social distancing, and of course, doing this for our safety, not only for ourselves as a, as a team, but as for all the people who are visiting our campuses. I also, with that, I'd like to tip my hat off and salute our, not only our custodial team, but all of our M N O staff who have been on the front lines since this pandemic started, doing a great, great, great work in maintaining and preparing our facilities. And we're ready to go to receive all of our students and staff this upcoming school year. Our, our campus staff is, will continually focus on providing a clean and sanitized areas of highly touch, traffic areas during instructional time. We'll also be implementing a sanitizing schedule for each campus and district facility. This using not only our solutions, but also our hydrostatic disinfectant sprayers. All of our cleaning solutions, I assure you, are, are in our materials that are being used are safe for students and our staff and meet all industry guidelines. We are truly committed on staying on the cutting edge as things are changing, and there's new products that are, that are coming out to, to our, are available to us. We'll do everything possible to make those available for, for our facilities. Finally, our custodial team will support the classrooms on a daily basis with a, with a strict cleaning regimen to help ensure that the environment is clean, healthy for each and every day for our students for the entire school year. With that, I'd like to just thank you all for your continued support and know that I'm always available as well as Mr. Ayington providing additional information to you upon request. Thank you. I'll turn this over now to Ms. Tammy McCavin.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. My name is Tammy McCavin. I'm the Director of School Counseling, and I will be discussing slides one oh one and one oh two of your board book. School counselors at all levels will continue to work with students, parents, faculty, staff, and community, whether that's in person or remotely. School counselors have been engaging and continue to engage in professional development this summer on virtual counseling, including the ethical and legal guidelines surrounding virtual counseling. They've also been working on professional development throughout the summer on specific social-emotional needs of students who are returning to school during this pandemic, whether it be in person or whether that be remotely. As I said, they'll continue to see students in their offices and their counseling suites for social-emotional needs and for student advising. The students will be required to sanitize their hands upon entering the counseling suite and then upon entering the counseling office. And of course, they'll all be wearing masks. The school counselors will also be sanitizing hands in between each student, and they will wear a mask at all times. Once a student leaves the counseling office, the school counselor will sanitize those touchable surfaces, including games and different things like that that students might be using in between seeing each student. Currently, they're working in their offices to establish that six feet distance between student and counselor and the counseling office. Only one student will be allowed in the counseling office if that six feet distancing does not apply. However, school counselors can still work with students in other large areas or outside as well. On slide one oh two, school counselors will continue to provide classroom lessons to the students as well, covering academic career and social-emotional needs. And these lessons will be provided in person, if applicable, or remotely, if applicable. They'll also be there to support the parents, the faculty, and staff, again, virtually through their website and other social media. And so the counselors are prepared to work with all the stakeholders on the campus to make sure that those social-emotional needs are met. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Gutierrez, the Director of Transportation.
President Nahara, I have some questions for counselors.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, ma'am, for the, Ms. McCavin, for the presentation. I think we can all agree that, you know, we're in unprecedented times, and I mean, what is really at stake here is the mental health of our students. What are we doing as far as being proactive as a district to help out these students, especially those that are at risk and homeless during this difficult time?
Thank you for asking that, Mr. Garcia. We have a committee that's called our Resource Committee. It's a group of counselors that have been working with agencies in the community, researching other websites, researching best practices to provide resources to parents, to students, to community. And currently, we're working with Panorama Education, and we have a survey that parents could engage in, and one of the questions on there is about their social-emotional learning. So through that survey, we're reaching out to those parents that do have concerns so that we can provide them resources. And of course, we'll continue to do that throughout the school year, especially when they come back, because we know those social-emotional needs are going to be there.
How are we reaching our homeless?
I'm sorry, I missed that. Did you say our homeless population?
Yeah, how, how are we reaching them? Because I know, we, you know, I think in the past we've had some children, like in the child crisis center and such. And how, how are we reaching them?
Well, we're working, of course, we have our liaison that works with our population that is homeless. So we are working through her, quite honestly, because she's the one who has the most contact with those students and knows who those students are. So, but I'm glad that you brought that up. That will definitely be something that we put on our plan as we begin this new school year to make sure that we're addressing the needs of those students.
Now, the survey talked about, is that, I mean, can parents still partake in that? Where can they find it? Do you have any results, any data from that?
Yes, sir. The, the survey will be available through the end of this month. We do have the data from the survey, and really what the data shows is, is who's taking the survey. And mostly, it shows us the open-ended questions where parents were able to comment on specific issues such as, such as meal service, whether they had daycare for their students, the social-emotional needs of their students, various things like that. And then there was an open-ended question. So we do have data from those open-ended questions that are available to us.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We'll go ahead and continue with transportation now.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and Board members. My name is Jacqueline Gutierrez, Transportation Director. I will be presenting from page one oh three. All over the country, parents are wondering if schools will open this fall and agonizing over whether it is safe to send their students back to school. Is it safe on the bus? The meaning of safety is involving in measures such as new social distancing guidelines presented challenging to students' transportation staff to stay up to date of new challenges and to feel safe doing so. Safety has a new meaning these days. With the start of COVID nineteen pandemic, we are acting quickly to enhance and our safety measures. Our employees were insured to deliver safe ride in the time of COVID nineteen to all our students by observing that all our students boarding the bus will, are well and checked and safe by checking students' temperature before they board and hand sanitizers when boarding the bus. All students must wear a face mask, including our employees. For that reason, we need all elementary students for a guardian or someone over eighteen to make sure they stay with the students till they board the bus, in case they are not allowed to do so due to the temperature being higher than normal. That way, they can take their student back home safely. Transportation employees will be educating students about when boarding the bus, they need to social distance and sit where the seat is marked. Our students, there will be one student per seat unless they're siblings, then they will be allowed to sit together. There will be up to twenty six students per bus, in which we used to transport fifty two or more students per bus, especially when they were prekinders, then we could transport up to seventy seven students. But in this time, we will be only transporting twenty six students per bus. Besides focusing on our student safety, we are also focusing on our employee safety, maintaining training, enhancing cleaning, disinfecting practice on our buses. We will be screening all our employees with their temperature, making sure they are following social distancing, wearing their masks, and staying safe as well. Sanitizing all work areas, we will be creating guidelines for proper bus cleaning and ensuring the safety of all students and employees, clearly communicating and following all S I S D wellness protocol for everyday safety. Thank you for all your support. And now I pass it on to Ms. Marty's part from Library Services.
President Nahara, Mr. Man, I have a few questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Man.
Ms. Gutierrez?
Yes, sir.
You said you will be checking temperatures before they board the bus?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to hold up the route or are we going to start earlier? Or what, what measures are you taking so that the drivers are on time from one point to another point? And also, go ahead.
For right now, I have been talking to Ms. Macias going over that. We just want to make sure the students, before they board the bus, they are safe to do so. Because before getting to school, we want to make sure they don't have a temperature or are not sick. So we're going to be training our drivers on that, and we're hoping to get more monitors where they will help also our drivers because it will take away a little from them of what they're doing when the students are boarding on the bus.
Right, exactly. Now, my other question is that, so you're, you cut the buses to twenty six children? Do we, are we going to have enough buses?
For right now, because of the multiple routes, how they were now, and thank you for that, where they now, elementary will be going in at a different time, middle school and high school, that helps a lot where there'll be multiple runs. So if they start at twenty five percent and even at fifty percent, we will be good. This time, we already did a route visit, and for the first time in a long time, I have seven drivers that were not able, that did not get a route just because of combining routes and helping out with all the different times the campuses will be starting school.
Right, okay. Okay, now my next question is the bus driver's safety. What are we doing for their safety as far as keeping them safe?
For right now, we're developing guidelines for them. They will be, all have a mask. They will have shields, also face shields, gloves. We're going to be providing all that, hand sanitizers. We're guiding them on how they're going to come into the building to clock in and also depart. I know they all have to come in. We have two hundred and four drivers and eighty five monitors. So they all come in, mostly all at the same time, because all the routes run at the same time. But we're making schedules how they're going to be coming in and going out and going to their buses. We're going to be very busy in the month of August to retrain all of them, showing them the new normal, making sure they're all following. I mean, it's going to take time, but I know we have great employees and they will do great. They will.
Now, one last question. You said shield. Is that going to be mandatory or is that going to be up to a driver? Because those shields sometimes can be kind of in the way, especially when you're driving. It's kind of somewhat of a reflective device, you know?
Yes. Right now, they're not mandatory. I, to me, they're, they're an adult. They are responsible for themselves. Some employees have gone beyond, and they've gotten goggles for themselves to protect themselves. Like I told many of them, I invest in me and what I need to protect me. And I understand the district provides so many things, and they always have. They've been wonderful. But I also invest on myself, how I want to protect myself. If I want a better mask, I want state-of-the-art of things, then I invest in myself. And yes, some employees have said that what is a shield hinders me from driving correctly or seeing what I need to see. And the other day, they sent two for the driver and monitor because they picked up for the graduation of Socorro High School, and they did very well with it. They said that it didn't bother them at all. It was very clear that it didn't hinder them from doing their job.
One last question. Seat belts. Some of these new buses are equipped with seat belts now. Are we going to start using seat belts now?
Yes, only the new buses are the ones that have the seat belts right now. And by the end of August or September, we should be getting ten more new regular buses with seat belts already provided. And I think because now there'll be less students, it'll be easier for them to put on their seat belts and all that. We were using them only for the pre-K for right now because they're the ones that get off their seat more than the older students.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackie. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Nahara, I got some questions for Ms. Jackie.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Ms. Jackie, I, I know a lot of parents are worried about the, you know, disinfecting the buses and such. Can you explain the, the process of, you know, what we're using as far as, you know, the chemicals to disinfect? I think it's, they call it like electrostatic disinfectant, and how effective that is?
Yes, for right now, when we pick up the students, the buses will already be clean. We'll be using the disinfectant spray and we'll be wiping down, once we drop off, say we drop off elementary at school, will the driver and monitor, if it has a monitor, not just a driver, will wipe down all the seats before they go pick up middle school. They drop off, they'll do the same thing before they pick up high school. They finish the route, they'll do the same thing. We also ordered electrostatic sprayers where they'll be used once a week. That is once a week, and it holds the chemical to keep everything sanitized for the whole week. And on Fridays, that's what the driver will do. Once it finishes, their route and everything, they will do that, clean down the whole bus, electrostatic the whole bus to make sure it stays clean. And then Monday again, before they go pick up their students again, give it a nice wipe down before they go and pick up the student because the bus was sitting down the weekend, just to make sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for transportation?
Yes, President Nahara.
Yes, President Nahara?
Yes, sir, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, thank you, Jackie, so much. You've been doing your job just for about a month or so, and in the middle of a pandemic, that's very challenging, but you're doing a fantastic job, Jackie. But yeah, Mr. Mena, you know, that was a great question, Mr. Mena, and that is a concern when you are taking the temperatures of the students, and it's going to delay, you know, like you mentioned, Mr. Mena, the students being dropped off at the school. So, you know, we have 47,600 students. I believe we transport every morning, I don't know, I'm thinking a wild guess, 13,000 students get transported, more or less. So, is that correct, Jackie?
Yes, sir.
More or less, oh, wow. About 13,000 students get transported every morning. That's a lot of students. And with this pandemic, with this COVID-19, this is obviously a world problem, but talking specifically about Socorro ISD and our community, we have some awesome parents. So we will be, Mr. Mena, to address one of the things we'll also be doing, to transport 13,000 students, having to take temperatures, having the students, hopefully, you know, practice social distancing in the bus instead of having a bus packed of students, you know, they're going to be spread out. It'd be 11 o'clock or so in the morning before we drop, 11:30 before we can drop off every student, we do all that. My point being is that we are going to strongly encourage our amazing parents, that this is a team effort. Parents, we're going to ask them, if you can drop your student off at home, that would help us out tremendously, tremendously, because it's very taxing on our transportation team. And again, I want to make sure that students are in school on time. So that's one of the things, you know, Mr. Mena, that we'll be asking our parents, that hey, if you can wake up and if you have that opportunity to drop off a child, your child at school, drop them off instead of putting them on the bus.
That would be awesome if they would do that for us.
Yes.
Yes, that would be awesome if that happens, then that would alleviate a lot of stress on the bus drivers and the monitors. Because, yeah, I remember, I worked for FedEx for 28 years, and it's all about route knowledge and the route being on time. So I foresee that as a problem, and that was one of the questions that I asked, Jackie.
Yes, sir.
If that didn't happen, it would be great. That would be awesome.
And usually, we pick up our students and drop them off at school 15 minutes before school starts. And that's going to take the 15 minutes that we would arrive there early. Now we would arrive there just, I think, still 15 minutes before, picking them up earlier.
And Jackie, it's just going to be, you know, the first couple of days is going to be probably chaotic. But after a while, the parents will see, and they will assist, they'll get there early. And even the students will, you know, they'll line up for the temperature check. And it'll, you know, after a while, after about a week or so, I think everything will pan out the way we want it to work. And like Dr. Espinoza said, if the parents can help us out there a little bit with dropping off the children or taking them to school, that would be awesome. It's a team effort. SISD, citywide, you know, we just have to deal with this. And hopefully, everything works out for us, and I think it will. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Gutierrez? If not, then we'll move on with Ms. Sparks with Library Services.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. I am Marcy Sparks, and I am Socorro ISD's Library Services Coordinator, and I will be speaking about the Library Services Safety Overview on page 104 of your board book. So our SISD school librarians will continue to offer a safe environment, both virtually and in person, for students and staff to continue to learn, engage, and explore in all learning models. As campus technology leaders, librarians will use their expertise to offer lessons and support such as embedding their teaching experience in collaborative planning as remote co-teachers, creating book talk videos and live read alouds that personalize the reading experience, and developing custom tutorials for teachers, parents, and students to learn how to navigate SISD's many quality online resources. Librarians will continue to support campus laptop and hotspot distribution, tracking, and use. Additionally, they will provide troubleshooting and support for remote students at their point of need and thereby freeing teachers to focus on content instruction. They are also very excited to offer fun programming like book clubs, maker spaces, and featured guest speakers in a virtual environment. Libraries must continue to provide access to students who prefer print materials. So librarians will teach students how to browse the library collection online before coming into the space, if allowable. And students will be able to reserve books at the library and will collect in advance, quarantine, and make available for pickup. Our librarians will follow all recommended safety precautions promoted by the CDC, ALA, TLA, and local guidelines. For example, all circulated materials will be quarantined for 72 hours, and checkout procedures will prevent the direct exchange of materials between the librarian and the students. Our goal is to provide great service for our students, teachers, and parents that utilizes a variety of technology to continue to build school-wide community even as we are socially distant. And now over to Ms. Chenowski with CNS.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I'm Shelley Chenowski, Director of Child Nutrition Services, CNS. I will be going over the slides from page 105 through 108. CNS follows all health department food safety practices, which have now been combined with wellness protocols. CNS is following all district wellness protocols as listed on your slide on page 105. And to take it a level further, we are requiring all food vendors who provide deliveries to our kitchens to follow all wellness protocols to include washing their hands before and after servicing the campus. Upon TDA approval, as our students learn from home, drive-through pickup meal service will be provided at each campus. Families can pick up breakfast and lunch meals for their children daily with an ID or ID number, which will be charged based on the student's eligibility status. CNS will continue with touchless delivery, meal delivery using personal protection equipment and follow all safety protocols. Once students return to campus, pre-K through 12th grade levels will have breakfast in the classroom. This is new to our high school students with breakfast in the classroom, and we're excited about rolling that out for them. Pre-K through 8 will have lunch in the classroom as well. Staggered meal delivery will be required for this type of service. For high schools, lunch meal service will take place in the dining room. Removal of communal napkins, silverware supplies, self-service of any option will be eliminated, and hand sanitizers will be at every point of sale. Tape marks on the floor for six feet apart to promote social distance while waiting in line. Students will sit with distance between them and facing the same direction while they are eating their meal. We will prohibit food sharing activities. And as always, CNS is looking to provide safe, healthy, nutritious meals and to keep all safe. Thank you.
President Nahara, Paul Garcia, I got a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Ma'am, can you explain how the breakfast in the classroom is going to be rolled out operation-wise?
Currently, we already offer breakfast in the classroom for all our pre-K through 8 students. And so this is a process we've been doing for seven years since Dr. Espinoza helped champion that with us. And so now, we serve breakfast in the classroom for pre-K through 8s. We deliver the ice chest to each classroom, and then the students are allowed to get their meal. A change with this will be now, we will deliver the ice chests and the coolers, I should say, to the classroom in the classroom. We will actually ask for the doors to be open and deliver the meals in the classroom so that way, there is no touching of the meals. They are under the guard of the teacher so that way, it limits that touch and exposure. And we will begin that at our high school grade levels as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chenowski, are you going to have enough personnel to distribute all this food to the classroom?
So for our pre-K to 8, this is what we do. We've done it for years and years. So for the high school, we will be doing this as we have the smaller 25% and 50%. As they roll that out, we will be able to provide that service. And so as more students come on the campus, that's when we will continue to assess, to work with our amazing teachers, our custodial staff, monitors, volunteers who help us. So if there is a need to continue it as all the students join, I'll work with our team members and our superintendent teams, and we definitely see if it is doable.
So it could become challenging for us at the high school level, once we're at 75, 100% then?
Yes, sir. But, you know, I just believe in our team members so much, and I know that as we have so many opportunities to set controls in place to keep the children safe in the classroom, if that's what we need to do, then, you know, we will definitely look to see how we can make that happen. If it's not doable, then dining in the cafeteria, we can zoom back to that if that is the way that it needs to go.
I'm sure you'll make it work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Shelley, this is Paul Garcia. If we do end up in a 100% remote learning situation, are we still providing meals to the community? And what is going to be required at that point for parents and students to pick up meals?
Thank you for that, sir. Yes, we, once school resumes, we will be providing grab-and-go meal service curbside at all our schools. We will be providing it to all children who attend at each school. So it won't be open to the community completely. It will be for those students at those campuses. And they will be required to show an ID or an ID number, and then we will charge the families accordingly for their status based on free, reduced, or paid. And we are working on process and protocols to see what that will look like as we get closer to it. But right now, we will resume the same type of service that we were doing from March through the end of June. We will be doing that type of service that everybody's familiar with.
Thank you, ma'am. And again, thank you so much for all your efforts. I appreciate it. With one last question is, how are we protecting our employees in CNS Department?
Thank you for that, sir. We are, way back in March when we started doing meal service with the support of administration, we set some protocols in place to include mask, disposable aprons to be changed out daily, social distancing. We have now offered face shields to any personnel who is in direct line of our parents as we're handing out the meals. We are providing meals in the trunks for our parents, or we have a tray and we extend the meal out to the parents to help provide for that touchless service just to protect our families, our children, and as well as our employees. Of course, we use disposable gloves, hand washing often and changing those gloves often. We have provided training to all our team members. And as our team comes back for the fall, we are doing some staff development trainings at each campus to provide one-on-one site training because we want to make sure that we are doing everything to keep everyone safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Chenowski, I have one more question, Mr. Mena. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Vendor-wise, like Burger King and some of these high schools, you know, other businesses that are in there, are they going to be operating still? Or how's that going to work when we do go to 100% or 75%? Does the student have a choice on what meals he can have? Or, I don't know, it's just a lot of questions that I have. I'm sorry.
No, it's a great question, sir. We have closed campuses, our high schools. And then we have Montwood and Americas. With the construction that is happening at those sites, we make sure that we do have availability of meals. And because of that construction, it is being recommended that our vendors be allowed to come into the schools to sell. But it will be under the very watchful eye of the principal of the campus as well as our wellness team to ensure that all wellness protocols are being followed for those meal service at the campuses for the students.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Chenowski? Okay, then we can move on. Thank you. Thank you so much. Dr. Castro?
Yes, yes, hello again. This is the Spark Astro Emergency Manager. You'll notice the last part of this presentation on page 109 and 110, you'll find that we'll be adopting the use of National Incident Management System, or NIS, by Federal Emergency Management, or FEMA, as a way to prevent, protect against, mitigate, respond to, and recover from incidents. NIS is applied to all incidents, and we are currently using. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Castro. And Board of Trustees, just want to thank you for giving us many, you know, a lot of your time, giving us your feedback. Our Safety and Security Committee had no idea that what they were in store for this year. They actually are recreating their systems to keep everybody safe. I know they've been meeting consistently, getting this information out, and your input is so important. Dr. Espinoza, he also has us have a new normal task force. And with their input, with your input, as you noticed, there's so many things that oftentimes, when you ask us a question, we always say, "Great question. Let us incorporate that into our programs." And you know what? Together, we're going to get through this. Within a couple of months, this amazing team has recreated new normals for Team SISD to keep everybody healthy. Any other questions for any of our team members? We actually have 12 departments represented here in this presentation, and thank you for your patience and time.
President Nahara?
Yes, sir, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, I'd just like to add in closing, you know, I want to thank all the presenters that you heard from. But like Ms. Macias said, we have the new normal task force. I think it was Mr. Martinez, our Fine Arts Director, who mentioned that he goes back and he talks to his Fine Arts team at the campuses. Every one of these, you know, of these individuals, they go back and we involve our employees in these decisions, these monster decisions that need to be made. It's just not done from the top done. We get input from our community, our stakeholders. So again, I just can't thank the team enough. But they are, the new information that comes out seems like on a daily basis. We have to go and we have to process things, think things through, let's talk it out. What's the best decision? But we always get inputs from our stakeholders. So just wanted to say thank you to the entire, the entire team and Ms. Macias. Great job.
And yes, to add? Yes, sir. Hold on just a moment, please, Mr. Gunnar. On the board, you know, a normal school year starting is hectic. But this year, you have had just monster obstacles to face. And I want to thank each and every department for your countless planning and preparing for the for the safe return of our students and staff. We uh on behalf of the board, we can't thank you enough. Mr. Gondola?
Uh just real quick at the end, I, again, I wanna thank everybody for their, for this information. Like Mrs. Nakada said, this is a it's a lot of information to take in, but the one question that I have, and I guess it's a question that's gonna matter at the end, is um is the cost to the district? Because we are adding so much more to our budget, and I don't think we've actually touched bases on it, on what this is costing the district and how it's gonna affect our budget. You know, uh is the state gonna provide money for all these things that we're having to buy because of this, or is it gonna be put on the district? Because if it's gonna be put on the district, that means we're spending a lot of money that we're gonna have to take from somewhere else. So. And I don't, I don't look forward to that at all.
So, Mr. Gondola, this is Tony. Just wanna state, uh we have, uh this past year, we did allocate some funding. Uh we did redirect some funds at the end of twenty, which was last month, towards the uh purchase and procurement of PPE. So we allocated about one-point-five million dollars this past year for PPE. And we're using that primarily to purchase what's needed for the safety of our employees. Now, we haven't used it all. Uh we're, are, there are some agenda items that we're asking for the board's consideration and approval to increase some bids or use cooperatives for this PPE. And we're gonna probably roll over those funds and those encumbrances for this purpose. But there are some opportunities from TA to get reimbursed for some of our expenses or through FEMA. And we're working with uh Ms. Macias, we're working with his Morregos uh staff, uh Dr. Starkey, uh and Summers to see if we can kind of uh tap into those grant opportunities and reimbursements. Um so just wanna provide you with that information, sir.
Well, again, I mean, and I appreciate that, Mr. Ressa, but I'm talking the long run. I mean, I I I know the safety equipment that we needed to get, but I'm talking in the long run. I'm talking everything that's happening right now with and what's gonna happen in the future. I mean, I I I would love for our president to come out and say, hey, there is a cure. Everybody's gonna, you know, this is gonna come out now and go back to normal. But I really doubt that. I don't think we're gonna be normal for a while. And and I'm talking the cost of what's coming. I'm talking because if we're gonna do remote learning, and and I would love to make sure all the kids are coming back. And I would love to have, I would love to have the normality back. I'd love to, you know, see the buses rolling, have our, have our employees back working so they're making money like our bus drivers. Like, you know, the whole thing we heard earlier. You know, a lot of people are getting infected. You know, it's affecting a lot of people, but in the long run, it's gonna affect the school district itself. I mean, you said one-point-five million just for for this. I know this is gonna, this is costing us a lot more money now. As in, you know, overtime, you know, computers that we might have to buy more because I don't know if we had enough for all our students. I, we probably did, I'm not sure, but our normality has changed now. Now the normality is that everywhere you go, you have everybody wearing masks and um I'm saying, what are we looking at? How much money is this gonna affect our budget? And I mean, the whole way around. I'm not just talking safety equipment. I'm talking overtime. I'm talking the changing of how we do business, how we run our schools, everything costs. And you know this, and now these are adding costs. And we need to know what the big number is gonna be because then that's where decisions are gonna come in that we need to make. And I'd rather be in front of it than behind it. So we know and let everybody out there know that this is what's going on and this is how it's getting affected. Because I'd love to say, you know, tell our taxpayers, like, hey, this is gonna happen. We need more money. But right now, a lot of people are really strapped. A lot of people are barely making it, and some aren't. And I wish, I wish it was, I wish it was different. But this is our reality right now. And that's what I'm talking about. I I I think we need to really start looking into what this is costing and what it might cost us in the future and how it's just gonna impact our budget. Again, that's just my thought on it. Okay?
Uh, this is Paul Garcia. Can you uh talk a little bit about the CARES Act and some of that federal funding that came in? Or maybe did not come in?
Well, so we did receive uh about nine-point-eight million dollars in CARES funding from the federal government through the Texas Education Agency. And so to that extent, uh we're using that primarily one-hundred percent for the procurement of computers, laptops and associated supplies. Uh the state uh did state that they were going to withhold um that same amount from our end-of-year state funding for two thousand twenty. And so the statement is that they're being, we're being held harmless, uh and we're being held hold because I would assume that's additional funding in their eyes. But by the same token, um they're using that to certainly assist them with uh shoring up the state budget. So the comptroller uh yesterday announced that they're projecting about a five-point, about a four-point-nine billion-dollar shortfall for this year in the state's budget. Now, they were projecting, I believe, a hundred-and-twenty-one uh billion dollars in 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 revenue for this biennium, sorry, for this year. And they're, they're estimating that it's gonna end up at about a hundred-and-ten billion dollars. So that's about eleven-billion-dollar shortfall. But they are using the CARES funding to kind of help reduce that deficit. Um certainly, values are higher than what they projected, so that means it's more tax dollars going in and and less state funding going in. And ADA was uh smaller than what they had projected. So um bottom line is that um we're using that CARES funding for the computers. Uh but that did result in uh less state money than than what we anticipated for twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Ressa. And is there any kind of forecast, uh you know, from the comptroller, comptroller regarding, I mean, what can we expect as a district?
Not at this time, Mr. Garcia. I think they, they were pretty upfront, saying this, this is a a period of uncertainty. Uh they're projecting through the end of this fiscal year. But as for the year that's coming up, the biennium that's coming up, they're not making any type of uh projections at this time. They're just simply saying it's very uncertain um what's gonna come. It also predicated on how soon we control the pandemic, how soon the economy gets going.
Uh, thank you. I like, I have a question for Ms., for Dr. Starkey.
Yes, sir.
How you doing, sir? I I understand that you're in charge of uh, I guess, like the federal programs and such?
Yeah, that is correct, sir.
Now, is there, have you been tracking that HEROES Act by any chance? And if you have been, can you give us any kind of uh little update or guidance as to uh what's on the table from that act?
You know, um, Mr. Garcia, um, that one is kind of stuck since that one is stuck in the middle of Congress and they can't seem to um get to a um a solution. It's very difficult to see um how that's going to um affect right now. Um, one of the things that the House Democratic majority is really fighting for is for more money um to come into public schools, but um there is no guidance out just yet as um to how much that would be and how much each state will get and therefore how much district, how much each district will get as per um allocation.
And how about any kind of update from the Congressional Budget Office in their outlook for the budget and the economy? I don't know if you're tracking that at all, but I just figured I'd ask since you're you're a subject matter expert in that.
Um, I stay on it and I um, I stay on it and I track it from time to time. And at the moment, um um they've actually threw the stimuli and such as what Mr. Ressa was referring to on what we have with the CARES Act. And um also with the um traditional grants that we receive, we've actually been um fortunate to um receive more. Um so there, it's been on an uptick recently, um but there is nothing um that they have um out in stone forecasting um for later years. Um most of the time, I would, I would think if you wanted to, honest to God, if you wanted to ask me that question probably next March, then I would be able to tell you what the proposals would be for the um allocations because they release it usually right around that time, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, uh, thank you so much. I I do have a question from for Mr. Campoya. Do you have a moment, sir?
You're welcome, sir.
Yes, sir.
I know we're talking about, you know, the finances and, I mean, essentially, human capital. Um have we received any kind of resignations from teachers or employees uh in large part due to, I mean, because of this COVID nineteen?
That's a very good question, Mr. Garcia. I was already asked that question by one of the associations. And right now, our records do not indicate any resignations stating that as a reason. So we do track the reasons as to employees resigning. But as of now, no employee has stated that they're resigning because of COVID nineteen.
Okay, and then as far as if if an employee, I mean, gets sick with COVID nineteen, I mean, obviously, there's that DOL guidelines. I know that, I think you emailed it to me. That's the form. That, I mean, that form has all the information where employees can um understand and read the rights. Am I correct?
That is correct.
I I'm sorry to interrupt, but these questions on finance and human resources are off our agenda item, and so we're not able to discuss those. We can, however, uh put these on the agenda for August and get updates. Are there any other questions or comments concerning the Safety and Security Committee update?
I just have to make a comment. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to dissent from that. Uh I disagree because anytime we're talking about programs, you have to consider human capital. You have to consider your employees, and I think these are very valid questions. However, I do respect the president and your authority. And so I'll uh stand down now.
Mr. Blanco, will you weigh in on this, please?
I'm sure. It really depends on how the board feels about the topic being discussed. I mean, they're somewhat related, but if you want to get into specifics about numbers and dollars, you're probably better off having a specific agenda item on that. Because the agenda item for this is for the Safety and Security Committee update. It really wasn't a, an action item posed, posed as anything like that. Um, there's nothing wrong with asking a few questions, but I do think you're getting a little bit off topic.
Thank you. Again, we can add uh the Human Resources Department and uh Finance to have us an update on these items, but at this time, we will move on to item six, Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
President, I would like to pull number G, please, on Consent Agenda.
President, I would like to pull item number four.
Uh, Mr. Getta, that E four?
Yes, I'm sorry, E four, correct.
And Mr. Mina, your item six G, that is being asked to be pulled by Administration as well. And so.
Sorry, it's it's uh four G, I think it is, yeah. Student Code of Conduct, that one.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, it's six G, and that one is being pulled by Administration for a a change as well. And with these two items, uh do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, Paul Garcia.
And to approve Consent Agenda with the exception of item six G and E four. Motion was made by Mr. Mina and submitted by Mr. Garcia, and now I'll call for a vote. Miss, I'm sorry, is there any further discussion? And if not, Mr. Morales?
Hi.
Mr. Getta?
Hi.
Mr. Gondola?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
Mr. Mina?
Hi.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Hi.
And the motion carries, and we will move on to the first pulled item, which is six G.
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, uh request to pu, or to approve item six G with the omission of section two A and B on page one-seventy-nine.
Uh, Mr. Mina, does that address your concern, or did you have a different concern on this item?
Uh, one-seventy-nine, I'm still reading. Which one was it, Ms. Macias? I mean.
Yes, it was on page one-seventy-nine, Mr. Mina.
Yeah.
Uh, section two A and B, request to delete and omit that section and request for your approval with that omission.
So this is, so they, you're, you're saying that they're gonna wear the uniforms during virtual, or it's optional?
Correct. And what we're requesting is to remove that section, the the number two. And therefore, at that point, of course, uh wearing the uniform, and again, former elementary teacher, our little ones get so excited about having their backpack, uniform. We wanna create that sense of education. It's school, even though it's virtual, there's still, there's still something about being excited about being, going to school. So that's something where our administrators and our teachers will work with students and parents um to, you know, to teach them about our uniforms, about what we require that way whenever they're transitioned. Because we, we hope and pray that COVID is gonna go away someday. And that way, as they transition back to us, it'll be a a more seamless transition. So with that, what we're doing is we're gonna go ahead and just omit that number two where it says that it's required school uniform shall be worn. And that way, the teaching continues and our current um student code of conduct will take place and that teaching and learning will occur.
Okay, Ms. Macias. So, so in other words, they can, they have the option, they can encourage, right, to wear the uniform? But at the same time, they can wear regular attire. Is that correct?
Correct. And that's where we're gonna work with those families because we have also our amazing CIS uh workers. Where if it's, if it's an extenuating circumstance, we wanna know so that we could help. In that way, and like I said, our students, they feel proud of of being just like everybody else. The reason that we have our uniform policies and procedures is that way it also, it evens the playing field. That way, there's not, uh, that way, students can't see the difference. We're all the same. We're all here to learn. And and that's something that we want to continue to advocate for. So again, we're gonna remove this piece, and then we're gonna allow our our teachers, our principals to to educate and and to truly guide our parents. Um that way, as we're transitioning back, uh, we're ready. I hope that answers.
Now, the dress code still stands. If we're, I'm not gonna see any, I'm not gonna get any calls from parents or saying that they looked and somebody was wearing a spaghetti strap or in pajamas or, you know.
That's correct.
The T-shirt that said something vulgar on there. That's still in place, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And our uniform policy, it helps us with that, but yes, all of that still is in place. In that way, it just provides a little bit more flexibility to those teachers and to our administrators. That way, we get everybody ready to transition back to to dig, to traditional learning.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions about item six G?
Uh, President.
Yes, sir, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, uh, I I agree wholeheartedly with uh with Mr. Mina. I talked to Mr. Mina yesterday and and I uh, he and um, like he said, no uh, you know, inappropriate outfits, you know, uh.
That will be addressed, Mr. Mina, because I'm with you, we're on the same page on, on making sure that our students, and we have fantastic students, you know, they know what's right, what's wrong. So we see, we see, you know, students that are inappropriate, they will be addressed. Hey, go to your closet, get another shirt on. So, thank you for emphasizing that, Mr. Mina.
Hey, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mina and a second by Mr. Garcia to approve consent agenda Item 6G with the omission of Parts 2A and B located on page 179. Is there any further discussion? And I'll call for the vote. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Getta?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta, I had to step away for the, from our meeting for just a few moments, but he will return. Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. The next pulled item is E4. Mr. Getta?
President Nahada, the only question I had or concern I had, and I talked to Mr. Dest in regards to this. I know it's for technology and it's $5 million, and I know we need it. The only concern I have is, when it's this dollar amount, and it's $5 million that we're talking about, for this dollar amount of, Mr. Garcia, the next time, and I'm only one board member, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, if they can maybe not put this in consent agenda, maybe put this in new business, just because of the dollar amount. This is just my feeling. I'm only one board member. This is the only question I have as far as the discussion. I'm not arguing the dollar amount. My only concern is, is just the, I guess, it's just the dollar amount on consent agenda. If it could just be a new business, that's my concern. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Getta, we'll certainly consider that for the future.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
And I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Morales to approve. Is there any further discussion? I would like to add, Mr. Getta, if the board would like to, we can add this to policy. At, at a policy meeting, that over a certain amount, that items are put on as new items on the agenda.
President Nahada, this is Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
I would like for the Policy, uh, Policy Committee to consider that, please, because I agree with Mr. Getta with the amount. This, this really should not be in consent.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. And I will call for the vote now. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Getta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. We will move on to new business now. I'm sorry, with Item 7A, Consider Approval of 2020/2021 District and Campus Improvement Plans. Dr. Starkey?
Good evening, President Nahada, members of the board, and Dr. Espinoza. Adam Starkey here once again, coming before you tonight to request your approval of our annual district and campus improvement plans and the performance objectives for the 2020-2021 school year. Each year, we have to update and revise our district improvement plan and our campus improvement plans, and bring these before you as performance objectives to request your approval. In advance, the, a link was provided where you could access the performance objectives proposed for your perusal, as well as hard CD copies, if you preferred to use those. On pages 208 to 216 of the Board Book are just some examples of what some of our performance objectives are going to look like for this year. And the timeline that we have as far as the development, as far as proposing to you for approval. And if this board approves tonight, then what we do in the future for the school year to evaluate our progress in our performance objectives, which of course drive back to our five universal district goals, which tie to our TMS ISD strategic directions. The newest thing this year that I just want to say is that we always have performance objectives that are pretty standard. Back in the May Board Meeting, we presented, I, I was with Ms. Parejo, Jessica Macias, Kelly McBane, and that's when we presented you all the House Bill 3 goals for the district that we map out for five years to 2024. And those, of course, are in early childhood and in college and career military readiness. And each campus has to also map out theirs and have theirs as performance objectives in, in support of the district efforts to help those areas to improve. So I just wanted to say that there were a couple of examples there, and that's something that is new in our performance objectives and in our needs assessments this year. And with that, all of our plans, from the district plan to the 50 campus improvement plans, all of them are ready to go and were full force and all set. Very happy to have gotten those finished and brought before you right here in July before we get the school year started. So with that, I would, I'll entertain any questions, but I simply will request your approval at this time, ladies and gentlemen.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Morales and a second by Mr. Mina. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Getta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Starkey.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Item 7B, Consider Approval of Revisions to Local Policy EIA. Ms. Macias?
President Nahada, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, I have policy EIA local on page 218 for you. What we're doing is we're adding our learning models, traditional, hybrid, and/or remote learning models to our policy. This is something that TA discussed, that we should be using our, our grading policy for any of the learning models that we're having. So for transparency, we wanted to add that to our policy, and that is the recommended change on page 218 for approval at this time.
President Nahada, this is Ms. Rodriguez. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further discussion? And the vote now, Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Getta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Macias.
Thank you, and included in your board packet, we also include For Information Policy EIA Regulation. I know that we don't have our policy meetings, but I wanted to make sure that you all are able to see the, the changes that we also made to EIA regulation, and it was just so that it's consistent and transparent. That way, if our parents go to the regulation or to local, it's consistent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Item 7C, Discussion and Possible Action to Support Request for Minor Boundary Modification of Foreign Trade Zone Number 68 Within District Boundaries. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Board President Nahada, members of the board, Dr. Espinoza. So we received a request, in part from the City of El Paso, and in part from a company known as SEVA, C-E-V-A Logistics, regarding a request that SEVA Logistics made with the assistance of the City of El Paso to make a change in the boundaries for a foreign trade zone. What that is, is a method by which goods are brought over the border and stored in a warehouse. This location for SEVA Logistics happens to be within our district boundaries. It's not particularly close to the border, it's in a warehousing area. So that's why Socorro is being asked to give a position on it. What they do is import goods in transit. Those goods, if they're within a foreign trade zone, can be held in a warehouse for a longer period of time and not be subject to inventory tax. It's to the benefit of the logistics company and those companies that they do business with, moving goods back and forth across the border, to have them stored, obviously, in a warehouse where inventory tax does not accrue. This will not impact the Socorro School District property taxes. I had a conversation with the city manager responsible for this foreign trade zone. We've actually supported these in the past, where they've asked for minor boundary modifications. The idea being that by allowing that type of warehousing activity, it increases overall property values, it keeps the business there, that in turn then helps generate additional property taxes and revenues for the district and the other taxing entities. The community college and the county were also asked to support the minor change. They've agreed. We need to submit a letter, and Mr. Iyington can sign that and send it in, assuming that the board will agree with the recommendation that this boundary be adjusted. Essentially, what it does is it extends the foreign trade zone to encapture the warehouse area where Seva Logistics operates, and that's it. We're recommending that the board approve it and allow Mr. Iyington to consent in writing. And the letter that was prepared for the consent was sent to us by the City of El Paso, and I've looked at it, and it looks fine.
President Nahada, I have a few questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mina.
Mr. Blanco, this is a transportation company, and they're requesting for extended warehousing and storage. Any of the goods hazardous materials, and will they be close to any of our schools?
I don't know the direct answer to that question. They've already been operating there. And SEVA Logistics already uses the warehouse. I don't, I'm not aware if it's on a hazardous route or not. I don't believe that it is. There was nothing in the communications between them, the city and us, that indicated that it was. This is not a request related to treatment of hazardous goods, it's only related to inventory taxes. And it's our right as a taxing entity to say whether we hold an opinion on that, since it doesn't affect us from a taxing standpoint, and it was my recommendation that we not have a negative opinion on it. But I do not know the answer to your question. I don't know what they store there.
Being a transportation company, most transportation companies do store hazardous materials. I'm telling you that from experience. Is there any way we can find out? Maybe we should table this for, you know, what's going on?
I'm sure. Yeah, I can, I can reach out to the Foreign Trade Zone Manager, Ms. David Panko at the city, and ask.
Ms. Morales, did you have a question?
No, I'm good.
And so do we have a motion to table this, or are we voting on it?
Motion to table due to the fact that, of the uncertainty of dangerous materials?
Second, Paul Garcia.
Hey, I have a motion by Mr. Mina and a second by Mr. Garcia to table this matter until we can get additional information. And I will call for the vote to table. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Getta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Blanco.
I will find out and I will report back.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Item 8, Executive Session. The meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel regarding opioid litigation and possible claims to discuss personnel and real estate matters, and to consider administrative recommendation for assistant principal position at Socorro High School and school improvement officer position under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074, and the time is 8:11. Now, board members, if you will, close out of this meeting and go to our executive session. And now we are back in session, and the time is 8:38. With new business? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
Okay, we will continue with Item 9A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Opioid Litigation and Possible Retention of Legal Counsel to Pursue Claims. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Board President Nahada, members of the board, and Dr. Espinoza, Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district. As we discussed in closed session, there's an opportunity on behalf of Socorro ISD to enter into a claim structure related to the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy. That bankruptcy arose out of multi-district litigation in Ohio. There's been a fund set aside and claims that can be made and asserted within that matter in the bankruptcy court, dealing with the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy. There is a set of lawyers, the law firm of Mr. Kaufman, the Kaufman Law Firm, and the law firm of Mitchell A. Toops, both from the Houston area, who are handling claims on behalf of school districts and other local government entities, who have incurred expenses, training expenses, and other fees associated with managing their prescription benefit programs that dealt with opioids, and in particular, Purdue Pharma opioids. And we're authorized, we're requesting authorization to allow that set of lawyers, the Kaufman Law Firm and the Mitchell Toops Law Firm, to represent Socorro in asserting those claims. There's no cost to the district to do this. There is retention agreement. They're asking us to sign, and I'd ask that the board make a motion, and we recommend that the board authorize either Mr. Iyington, Mr. Carmona, or, or President Nahada to sign the agreement and move forward and allow those lawyers to assert claims on behalf of the district in the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy.
Make a motion to pursue the claim. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Mina. Is there any further discussion? And I'll call for the vote. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Getta?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta? Mr. Gondeta? Gary? Can you hear us?
He is on, he is on, ma'am, but he is currently muted at the moment.
His mic is muted still.
Mr. Gondeta? Okay, I will continue. Mr. Mina?
Aye, I have motion, approve.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Hey, bro.
There we go. There you are. Thank you for joining us.
I was on it, just didn't want to turn on.
And your vote, Mr. Gondeta? Mr. Gondeta, your vote? I believe he's had technical difficulties, but with the board members that we have who have voted, we do have a quorum, so the motion passes.
Like, I have it on right now. There we go. Aye, aye!
Aye. Okay, thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Yeah.
We'll move on to item nine B one. Dr. Espinoza, the assistant principal for Socorro High School?
Yes, President Nahada, members of the board. Administration recommends Mr. Javier Aguilera to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as assistant principal at Socorro High School.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Gondeta. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Getta?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. And item nine B two, School Improvement Officer. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahada, members of the board. Administration recommends Mr. Al Garcia to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as a school improvement officer.
Move.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Mina. Is there any further discussion? And I will call for a vote. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Getta?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. If there is no other business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 8:44. I just want to thank you all, participating between our Safety and Security Committee, who have put in tireless time to make sure our students and staff are safe. Mr. Starkey for the district and campus improvement plans, and everyone who made tonight's meeting possible. I just thank you. And with that, please, everyone, be safe and take care.